Welcome, members of the public, to the June 12th Open Space Board of Trustees Meeting. My name is Michelle Astraea and I am the Board Chair. Let's see, did I read the right date? Hello, do I know what date it is? It is July 10th. And let's see, first order of business is to call the roll and then we'll move on to reviewing and approving the minutes. Trustee Carol.
President.
And trustee Glenn.
Present.
Trustee Zuckerman.
Here.
And trustee Robinson is in South America right now, so he regrets that he, I think he regrets that he can't be here tonight. And of course, I'm here, so we have four trustees present and we have a quorum. All right, next section is the approval of the minutes of the June 12th meeting. Boy, I'm getting my dates right here. And we'll do what we usually do, which is to go page by page and seek any questions, comments, or recommended changes. Starting with the first page, any changes? No, seeing none, I'll move to the second page.
I did have one under Agenda Item 5. I was wondering if maybe we wanted to clarify a little bit more what the board's intent was with the questioning and kind of the answers we got back from staff. And maybe under Return to the Board, potentially replacing the first sentence with something like, "Staff confirmed that designating this as an HCA would not stop a trail being built in the future such as the Burt."
Yeah, I thought that the minutes did touch on that, but if you wanted to make that more clear, I'd be happy to support you in that.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to make it very clear that that was communicated and that was the point of our questioning. Did you get that, Leah?
I support that, too. Any others on Page 2? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to Page 3. I would like to add something to Agenda Item 7 under Return to the Board, where Brady talks about consideration of temporal use. And then you mentioned that there are very few places that mountain bikes can go. Thank you so much for including that. I'd like to add on to that paragraph. She also clarified that users of the bikeway, parentheses, road cyclists, are very different than cyclists on North Sky, which are mountain bikers. And just add that, really just to clarify, a lot of that input that we got that night, we're referencing North Sky when we were actually talking about the bikeway. And a lot of the comments addressed those populations of people being kind of the same people, doing that same, yeah, doing two different sports at the same time. Now, does that sound okay?
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah, and that does reflect my recollection of what was spoken at the meeting, so I'd support that.
Great, thank you. Anything else on Page 3? Okay, we're on to Page 4.
Just a typo. Notice that the Q in McQueen in the third paragraph wasn't capitalized for Sam's name.
Good catch. I have something that I would like to add under Agenda Item 8, Matters from the Department. We're talking in that second paragraph about bear habitat suitability and the seasonal leash restrictions. I'd like to just add the comment that I made about these changes being a net loss for dog walkers. Even though the mileage appears to be different, the quality of the trail is different. So I'd like to propose adding this. Michelle noted that the changes are a net loss to dog walkers due to the quality of terrain lost in Shadow Canyon South Trail and requested that staff consider opening up additional voice and sight access in areas of similar quality that are not in high-quality bear habitat. Do you remember me saying that?
Yes, I recall you saying that, would be supportive of the change.
Yeah, that's fine with me as well, Michelle.
Thanks, Simon. Okay, any other requests for changes on the minutes? Okay, if none, would somebody like to move the minutes as amended? And you have to abstain, Sarah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the June 12th, 2024 OSBT action minutes as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, and I'll call the roll. Jesse Zuckerman.
Yes.
And Carol?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it's unanimous. Sarah, you abstain.
I abstain.
Okay, so Sam, I think you're up. Can you please read the rules of decorum? I wrote these down, so keep track.
And as I'm getting this up, we do have two sections tonight of public comment. The first is open comment for items not identified for public hearing. And the second is public hearing on the Fort Chambers-Poor Farm site. You'll see sign-up lists up here. If you haven't signed up to speak in advance and you'd like to speak in person tonight, please sign up here. And I'll grab those before we begin public comment sections. Okay, so with that, I'm going to share our rules for the meeting. Okay. "The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit this site. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during the meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. If you are joining in person, I explained where you can sign up if you haven't signed up in advance. If you would like to speak online and haven't signed up in advance, you can either click the raised hand icon at the bottom of your screen or you'll see an icon for participants. You'll click the three dots at the bottom right and you'll select Raise Hand. And I don't see anyone joining by phone right now, so I'll go over those instructions if we see anyone joining online." Okay?
Thanks, Sam. And like Sam said, we do have a public hearing tonight on the Fort Chambers-Poor Farm Concept Plan. And this opportunity is for folks to speak up on any other issue.
Okay, so we have no one signed up in advance and we don't have anyone signed up to speak in person for that section. So I'm just a reminder to please raise your hand if you'd like to speak during this section online. Not seeing any hands. No hands. Oh, I'm sorry, we did just get a hand. Sorry about that. Okay, so we do have one person, so we will... Okay. And... Okay. Donna, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had questions more than anything because my last understanding was that it was rented out to the next-door neighbor farm that was growing trees or something. And so I was trying to get clarity about that. And my question is, even if it is, you know, rented out to that other farm for the tree growing, that I know that one of the dreams of the native people for this area, the Rapahe people would be, and Cheyenne would be able to grow things there that they used to grow, you know, within their own culture. And I don't, my question is, why couldn't they do that as well as having the farm that has the trees? Because they actually could work together, is what I'm trying to say. And I'm just, I've been wondering about that for the last two years, truthfully. So I was happy to find out you were, you know, speaking to this issue. And also, of course, you're not growing trees inside the house, so at least I don't think so. So does anybody have any feedback on that? Can you hear me?
Hi, we can hear you. Would you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name is Donna Smith.
Donna Smith. Okay, Donna, are you speaking about the Fort Chambers-Poor Farms Concept Plan?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a separate section on that, but if you'd like to go ahead and finish your thought, you have another minute. We'll go ahead and let you finish your thought.
Yeah, I was just wanting to put that thought out there because, you know, it seems that people think that one precludes the other. And I think you could do both, is what I'm trying to point out. So I've just been wanting to say that for a long time. I just think it could have multi-uses rather than just one use. So that's all I wanted to put out there.
Great, thank you so much. We're going to get to that section here pretty soon and have a staff presentation and discussion about that if you want to stay online with us. Maybe we'll get you that question answered. Okay, any other hands?
Not seeing any other hands.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing session and move on to matters from the board. This is my fellow trustees' opportunity to ask any questions on the written information items or any other things that they have on their minds. We had one item in our packet, which was an update on the status of Prairie Dog Barrier Cost Share Program. Brady's not here to chime in on this. Okay, I'm not seeing any. How about on other matters? Yeah, we're going to cruise out of here tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead then and move on to the... I'll give it to you, Dan.
Sure, yeah, we have one item under the public hearing, and that is bringing back the Concept Plan for the Fort Chambers-Poor Farm property. We presented that to you in March, and we're back here after a public engagement period, as well as another meeting with our tribal representatives. Before Katie and Casey go in, I just thought I'd just quickly take the time to answer that specific question. Is that the property that is on the Poor Farm Fort Chambers is no longer under an active agricultural lease? And as will be described in the Concept Plan, there is plan for native plantings on the property.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so tonight we are... Yeah, tonight we're here to present the Fort Chambers-Poor Farm Concept Plan and also a management area designation. I'm Katie Knapp. I'm a planner with Open Space and Mountain Parks, and I'll also be presenting with Casey French. So tonight for this Agenda item, we will provide some background information and review the planning process, the Concept Plan, the feedback received, and anticipated next steps before looking at the recommended management area designation and a request for board action. The purpose of tonight's public hearing, we are finishing up a multi-year planning process to develop a Concept Plan for the Fort Chambers-Poor Farm property and are requesting board guidance. We are also requesting board guidance on a management area designation for the site. Before we talk about the project, let's reflect on the history of this area. The city of Boulder acknowledges the city is on the ancestral homelands and unceded territory of indigenous peoples who have traversed, lived in, and stewarded lands in the Boulder Valley since time immemorial. The city recognizes that the history of Fort Chambers is part of the American-European colonization that violently exiled indigenous peoples from their homelands and is a direct local connection to the Sand Creek massacre. So when we speak of the history of Fort Chambers, we understand that in 1864, more than 100 Boulder County men formed Company D, a cavalry unit that mobilized at Fort Chambers before participating in the massacre of peaceful Cheyenne and Arapahoe people at Sand Creek. We're grateful for the collaboration with Arapahoe and Cheyenne tribal representatives. We appreciate their guidance, friendship, and commitment to working with us on this project. I'm also thankful that some of the representatives we are working with were able to join us in March when we introduced the Concept Plan to the board. For some background information, the Fort Chambers-Poor Farm property was acquired in 2018. This property was determined to have resources that help fulfill all of the Open Space and Mountain Parks charter purposes. The Fort Chambers-Poor Farm is one of many Open Space and Mountain Parks properties shown here on the map. So for orientation, the city of Boulder is outlined in black with the open space properties highlighted around the city. The Fort Chambers-Poor Farm property is located to the east of the city in Boulder County and adjacent to other open space properties. Zooming in, this is a map of the site. It's 113 acres. Starting at the top or the north, there are hayfields, there are houses and farm structures located near the road to the west, vegetable plots to the south. The eastern portion of the property is a mix of forested areas and ponds from gravel mining from the 1950s and 60s. There's also a large sanitary sewer line that crosses the property across the southeast corner, and Boulder Creek is along the southeast edge. In the southwest corner of the property was a stone marker for Fort Chambers that was installed in the late 1950s. The stone marker was located near the old intersection of Andrus and 63rd Street. It was removed last year with support from tribal representatives, Open Space, Board of Trustees members, and the mayor, and it is currently in storage. As we continue this project, we will determine the future for the marker. The design and placement of interpretive and educational elements would be part of the next phase of the project. There are also several buildings on the property located in this highlighted area near 63rd Street. There are two houses that are shown here in gold or lighter color on the screen. The northern house is smaller. It was built in 1959 and it was renovated after acquisition to support agricultural tenants. The larger house to the south is a prominent historic structure. It housed the Boulder County Poor Farm from 1902 to 1918, and it's listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The house and farm structures have long supported agriculture. 37 acres have historically been farmed with six to eight acres of fertile soils that are uniquely suited for diversified vegetable farming. Senior water rights from north Boulder Farmer's Ditch allow for full-season watering in most years. The property supports a diversity of wildlife. There are open-water ponds from the past gravel mining operations and a variety of wetland types, but there's also a lot of noxious weeds and non-native vegetation. The location adjacent to Boulder Creek provides good restoration opportunities. Information we know about the site is available in an online story map. The site, this story map site includes historic maps, information about Company D, the Poor Farm, plants, animals, wetland soils, agriculture, zoning, adjacent land uses. There's a lot of information on the site. And we continue to update it with new information so that we can share what we learn. So now Casey will provide some information on the planning process.
So I'm going to start with an overview of all the planning related to the site from acquisition and go into the future. So following acquisition, we went through a process to integrate the property and identify the short-term actions that needed to take place during the first few years of OSMP ownership. And then in 2022, with those addressed, we began this multi-year collaborative Concept Plan process, which focused on identifying the long-term vision and management of the site. Moving forward, as we conclude this planning process, we will begin another phase of more detailed planning and design, in particular, on several of the more complex plan elements, such as the healing trail and the interpretation associated with that, and as well as the ecological restoration. And we will also be able to begin some implementation on some of the other plan-action items. And I'll come back to that at the end of the presentation, more next steps. So now I'm just going to share a little bit more about this process and how we arrived at the long-term vision and the Concept Plan. So this process followed a fairly standard site planning process in that it began with compiling the information that we had for the site, as Katie said, and put it into a story map. We developed alternatives, we evaluated them, and then we developed a draft Concept Plan and then we're proceeding to finalize it. And that process was layered with and informed by our engagement, which included tribal collaboration throughout the process, and it also included broader community feedback on the draft Concept Plan. And I just want to take a minute here to share just a little bit more about our engagement and the terms that we use. So this graphic shows the engagement terms that the city uses and the different levels of engagement that can be undertaken in any planning process. So as we work away from left to right, there's increasing community impact on the decisions. So at the lower end of engagement is a commitment to inform the community, and at the other end is to collaborate, which is to partner in decision-making. So given the Fort Chambers connection to the Sand Creek massacre, we decided we wanted to design a process to collaborate with the tribes that were impacted by the massacre and co-develop the plan. And at the same time, we were also aware of broader community interest in the property. We wanted to provide, design a process to consult with the community to obtain feedback on the project in the draft Concept Plan. So throughout the process, we met in person and virtually with the tribal representatives to co-develop the plan. We had multiple site visits and they shared thoughts, and we discussed the Concept Plan as it evolved at each stage. So again, we feel very fortunate to be able to work in partnership with the Arapahoe and Cheyenne tribal representatives, who are elders and cultural leaders designated by the tribes. This partnership is a unique approach to our planning and has been very meaningful. And we are grateful for them for their time and their thoughtful guidance. And we also want to thank the 473 community members who provided feedback. The goal of consulting with the community was to understand the level of support or opposition to the draft Concept Plan and also understand why. We wanted to share information and inform the community about the site, its connection to the Sand Creek massacre, and our tribal collaboration. And we did this through an online questionnaire. So I'm going to turn things back over to Katie now, and she's going to go through the draft Concept Plan and then also share a little bit more from what we heard from the community.
Great, so as we've learned about the site history and current resources, we also looked at future opportunities. Through our discussions with tribal representatives, emerged a shared vision to create a healing place for all. Heal the land, heal the people. The Concept Plan includes recommendations grouped into four main elements that support this vision. So the next slides show the Concept Plan that was presented to the board in March and also to the community for feedback. This plan shows the whole site and calls out the four main elements. The first, ecological restoration along Boulder Creek to the south of the site. Number two is the interpretive healing trail, which is located towards the middle of the site. Number three is visitor access, which is the western, southwestern corner of the site. And then number four is the farmstead agricultural improvements, which are in the, along the roadway in the farmstead area. Ecological restoration is recommended to heal the land from past land uses and includes large-scale restoration along the Boulder Creek corridor, restoring gravel ponds and removing trash debris and noxious weeds. The second key element is the healing trail with indigenous planting areas and spaces for education, reflection, and healing. These educational spaces are highlighted on the plan and could include different elements like signage, monuments, benches, and artwork. After the Concept Plan is finalized, we will start planning these elements and the teachings they convey. This is a close-up of the visitor access with a parking area and bus turnaround. The plan includes an option for a restroom facility and fencing to separate the visitor area from the agricultural fields. And I guess I just pause here for a second, too, and just say this kind of highlights a multi-use approach to the concept, the vision. So it includes both indigenous plantings and the agricultural areas, just to answer the question that we got earlier. Agriculture is that fourth element. The irrigated fields support diversified vegetable and hay production. Plan includes repairs to the existing farm structures and restoration of the historic house to support agricultural tenants with education also being a secondary use to consider. So the Concept Plan is what we're requesting the board to provide guidance on. And we also started generating some 3D renderings to help with the visualization of the Concept Plan. And so I'd like to share those as well. This is a bird's eye view looking from over the historic house, looking south at the visitor entrance and parking area. It shows interpretive areas by the road and parking lot. The renderings, they can be a nice way to help display the plan and convey the future vision, but they also can be a little tricky at this concept level because the details aren't defined yet, so just keep that in mind. This view shows the healing trail loop with different areas for interpretation and reflection, as well as indigenous plantings. And then here's another view looking towards the healing trail loop as you're coming from that agricultural field into that area. So at the March board meeting, we highlighted our plan for community feedback. We used an online questionnaire with office hours for anyone that wanted to meet in person. The questionnaire had a space for short comments, and then longer comments were submitted through a comment form or through email. Our goals were to inform people about the site, its history, and our collaboration with tribal representatives, as well as understanding the level of support the community would have for the Concept Plan. The questionnaire started with information about the site, its history and resources. It then explained our collaboration and shared vision before asking about the different Concept Plan elements, the overall plan, and some specific reasons for support or opposition. We also included standard demographic questions. We used several methods to get the word out about the questionnaire as highlighted in the June packet. So a press release had resulted in several newspaper articles and a couple of television spots. We also used social media posts, e-newsletters, and emails, including outreach to indigenous organizations. We received 473 questionnaire responses and over 300... We received 473 questionnaire responses and over 300 written comments. The June board packet includes the feedback we received, but I'll also go through the responses, although I'm not reading all 300 comments, so don't worry. The first few questions were about familiarity with the site, the Fort Chambers poor farm site, and then also with the Sand Creek massacre. So based on the results, we see that fewer people were familiar with the Fort Chambers poor farm property, but there was more familiarity with the Sand Creek massacre. We asked about specific information, historic information, and a little more than half of the respondents were familiar with the violations of the 1851 treaty and formation of Company D, and most were familiar with information about the Sand Creek massacre. Most people were also familiar with how Boulder residents benefited from the intergeneration, benefited from the removal of indigenous peoples, and they were also familiar with the intergenerational trauma that continues today. There was strong support shown for the city's collaboration with the tribes and also for the recommendations for ecological restoration and the interpretive healing trail. And just, there is a key across the top, but just also to orient yourself to the graphs, it goes from strongly opposed to the left, neutral is in the middle, and then strongly supported to the right. There was also support for continuing agricultural operations and strong support for the overall recommendations in the concept plan. When asked about specific plan items, there was strong support for the shared vision of heal the land, heal the people, the integration of the different elements, ecological restoration, agriculture, and recreation, and providing educational information about the Sand Creek massacre that includes indigenous perspectives. There was also support for restoring the historic house, planting and harvesting indigenous plants, and limiting recreational activities to walking or hiking in order to support contemplative experiences at the site. Written comments were submitted through the questionnaire, comment forms, and emails. From the comments submitted, prevalent themes include support for tribal collaboration, overall support and appreciation, and comments about education and learning. Several of these included suggestions for interpretation, which we will start planning in the next phase. The comments were categorized and summarized by theme, highlighting each unique idea, and a summary was reported, was provided to the board in June, along with a link to the full compendium of comments. Included in the comments were suggestions for interpretive elements and different design details, and we look forward to working on these details in the next design phase. We reviewed the community feedback with tribal representatives, discussing the comments we received. They were encouraged by the high level of community support, and there was agreement that the concept plan would not need revisions, that it was a good foundation for the vision that we were looking to achieve. We also talked about the site being a healing place for all, and that Boulder County residents should be included in sharing information and healing from past atrocities. Tribal representatives also confirmed that they have felt listened to throughout the planning process and that our collaboration has been a positive experience. So it was decided that the current concept plan would support the vision and that we should bring the concept plan back to the board for consideration without any revisions. And now Kasey will discuss our anticipated next steps for the project.
Yeah, so turning our thoughts towards the next steps as we conclude this planning process. As we stated, we'll begin another phase of more detailed planning and design, and we will also be able to begin implementation concurrently. So the shorter-term next steps will include continuing noxious weed management, cleaning up the debris, and planning and design of the large-scale restoration along Boulder Creek. Additional planning for the interpretive trail, working with both the tribes and community members to design the different interpretive elements and spaces to support contemplation, and beginning improvements to the farmstead to support continued agricultural operations. I just want to take another minute here just to talk a little bit more about the future planning, design, and community engagement for the healing trail and the different interpretive elements. We heard from the community that they were supportive and interested in this, and they shared several suggestions about interpretation. And we also heard from our tribal partners that the site should be a healing place for all, and that Boulder County residents should be included in sharing the information and healing from the past atrocities. So we do plan to work with the tribal representatives and Boulder community members during the engagement for this next phase. We'll continue, on that engagement spectrum again, we're going to continue to collaborate with the tribes, and we will involve the local community in that engagement. So zooming out to highlight the plan kind of in full implementation, on this chart, we show planning and design as the lighter colors, and then implementation as the darker colors. So overall, we estimate implementation to take around 10 years. And this, although this is due to several considerations, one of the primary factors is that the ecological restoration work will largely need to be completed in order to start construction of the visitor access and the healing trail. So I'll break it down in just a little bit more detail here. As I've mentioned, we'll begin with and continue the ecological restoration. Then we will begin the engagement and design of the healing trail and interpretive elements. We will install an interpretive area by the road while the restoration work is being completed, so that initial interpretive area we will be able to install. And we will continue to plan for the design of the interpretive experience along the trail in its entirety. And then we'll construct the visitor access elements alongside the healing trail after the restoration. And then since the agricultural and historic home improvements are not as contingent on the restoration, those will begin in the short term and they will go into the midyear. So now I'm going to switch gears, I guess rather abruptly, and go on to one of the other, to one of our other planning projects, which is assigning management area designations for properties without them. So hopefully you remember the gist of this project from our multiple previous touches with the board, including last month's memo and meeting. So Fort Chambers is one of the properties that currently does not have a management area designation. And we did initially think about bringing the management area designation for Fort Chambers in one of the groupings for that other project in process, but the concurrent timing of the two projects was a concern. A decision to share the recommended MAD within this site planning process instead of part of the MAD project was made to avoid raising concerns or creating the perception that staff were making decisions that would affect our collaborative planning efforts with our tribal partners. So again, it was a risk of perception that we just felt was too high. And while the MADS typically provide overarching guidance to site planning, in this case, the input from our tribal partners is considered the primary overarching guidance for this site, which is a unique context when we're planning for open space lands. So that said, staff is recommending a natural area designation, and this is due to the landscape context, the high value of interspersed resources, such as natural, agricultural, and the potential recreational resources. So in this case, using the term recreational in a slightly different context, more about a high-value contemplative visitor experience. And we are also recommending that the site remain closed until the improvements are made to support that visitation. So that does conclude our presentation, and we requested the board to make the motion here to advance the concept plan and assign a management area designation. So now I will turn things back over to you.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and open it up for clarifying questions from the board members, if there are any, and open up, after that, open up a public hearing, close the public hearing, and then we can have additional discussion and hopefully entertain some support for this concept plan. Do we have any clarifying questions or comments right away? Go ahead.
So I was wondering if a single piece of property can have two different management area designations, and in this case, you know, the question was spurred by how this property breaks down really neatly to a western half that's agricultural and an eastern half that's more natural.
So there is no rule that we couldn't do that, given our general landscape approach. We typically don't divide especially properties that small. You remember last month, we did divide Boulder Valley Farm, it was significantly larger, larger property, and the resources were even more dispersed. In this case, felt they were a little bit more interwoven, and given the size of the property, it just didn't seem to fit with the landscape. We did discuss, you know, agricultural, but there are areas, there are natural areas that do have that interspersed intensive agriculture, so, but they can.
Okay. So, and then the follow-up question, I'm having a little bit of trouble finding all of the different definitions of the different MADS, and I know they were in the May and the June packets, but they're so hard to navigate, you know, on the spot in the city's file tree, because the pages take a minute to load. So I just wanted to just ask you, sorry to put you on the spot like that, but is there anything in the natural area MAD that would preclude the continued farming use on the western half of the property?
No, not at all. We have agriculture throughout, throughout all of our management area designations, so the natural area would not preclude agriculture or that intensive agriculture use. And we do have some, if you wanted to, we do have the backup slides with some goals and characteristics, if you'd like to see those.
I'd just like to know how to find them or maybe just keep them for myself for these future discussions at some point. We can just talk offline about that.
Sure, we can make them available.
Yeah, all good.
I think you'd like a 50-page document to put under his pillow at night and read. No, I know we've seen them before, but yeah, I think it's important to understand the differences, but also know that uses can overlap. And, and clarifying question, did, you know, now we're talking about management area designations, was that at all part of the public input at all, I mean, the concept plan, or that's more of a staff thing that was separated from this whole process?
It was more of a staff thing that was separated from this process. Yes. So we, we hold the public hearing on the habitat conservation areas, and then we bring the other ones forward. You know, we did that through that process just for guidance, and so that, this follows a similar pattern in that where we're bringing it forward, you know, to guidance, and there's no public hearing on that. And it was a staff recommendation.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Sarah. I really appreciate that we have so much input and participation from the tribal representatives on this. Can you help me understand how they, how that input will be carried forward, how the participation will look as we move into the next steps?
Yeah, so we, we plan to continue the partnership with tribal representatives. One thing that we'd like to do after this meeting is meet with them, let them know how things go, and then also get their thoughts about how to move forward, what level of what level of commitment they have, and their ideas for involving, you know, broadening out our participation with the, with the public to get, you know, more ideas about the interpretive elements. The representatives themselves are designated by the tribes and come from out of state, so Oklahoma, Montana, and Wyoming. So meeting in person can be, can be challenging, but we try to do that as much as possible because it's so meaningful and valuable. But we, we are planning to have a virtual meeting later this month to just kind of touch base with them again. And they also have their councils change with elections, so also to, you know, and they have a lot of different priorities, so to be able to, you know, see what type of time commitment they're able to make on this project and stuff as well.
Sarah, I'll add that one of, we had one specific meeting in which the main agenda item, and this might have been a year ago, was what, what is your, what do you desire as your long-term relationship with the land? And we left it open, it could be, is ownership something that you desire, is, and where they landed is they wanted to have a continual involvement in this type of work, and sort of like the decision-making process about, so I think this next phase of looking at what the details might be of what's going to be on the site is something that they expressed a lot of desire to remain committed to working with us on.
And, and does the city, does the staff do, is there internally, including us here as a board, because I'm new, do we have any formal ways that we're intending to ensure that there is participation and decision-making aside from remote calls and just input? I do appreciate that that's happening. I'm looking for some really like tangible ways that we're ensuring that that, that we're continuing the participation and inclusivity and decision-making in the design process in particular, I hear that's the next step.
I think one of the next steps is we had an MOU, which kind of outlined our commitment and the tribal's commitment to that, and so that's one of the agenda items that we want to bring up in, in about two weeks, is do we need to renew an MOU? Do we need to have a new MOU? And to kind of outline that process, that's how we started the first phase of this planning process, was really kind of outlining it and talking about how we were going to get together at the frequency, what level of participation we want. So we're going to have those same conversations again for that next phase. So we'll be talking about whether we do an MOU. Yep.
So we'll have a chance to discuss this more too, because I have a couple of other comments as well, along those lines, but let's go ahead and hear from the community.
Okay. Oh, thank you. So we do have nine sign-ups in advance, and so we'll start with those. Thank you. Thanks very much. We'll start with those and then we'll move on to sign-ups in person and then to online participation. So when, when you do, if you are here in person and will come speak, come speak to the podium, please, and we have a timer going for you up here on the screen. So to start us off, we have Paula Palmer, followed by Timothy Harmos, and then Kristi Yoshinaga Itano. So Paula Palmer, if you could please go to the podium.
And if I could just ask the speakers, start with just repeating their name for the public record, that'd be great, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Paula Palmer, and it's nice to see you in person. I only see you on TV, so it's good to be here in person. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm one of the co-founders of Right Relationship Boulder, and I don't know how familiar you are with our organization, but we came into being in 2016 in order to help the city in implement the 2016 Indigenous Peoples' Day resolution. And as I'm sure you know, that resolution is not just about one day out of the year. That resolution calls on all of us, on the city staff, and on all of the commissions, and teachers, and ordinary people like me, to learn the history, the real history of this land and of our community, and to lift up the history of indigenous people and engage them in a process of learning together. So in that spirit, we created Right Relationship Boulder, and our name is really more of a question than a title. The question is, what would right relationship mean in the city of Boulder, given what we are all learning about our history, which, in which Fort Chambers is a major piece because of its association with the Sand Creek massacre. So for Right Relationship Boulder, we set out right away to visit the Arapahoe people in Oklahoma and in Wyoming, and we have brought them here many times since 2016, establishing really warm friendships with the people who are the tribal representatives, but with many other Cheyenne and Arapahoe people as well, by engaging them in a whole variety of activities, including offering opportunities for them to speak in schools. So we've talked with them many, 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 many times about Fort Chambers. So we've talked with them many, 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 many times about Fort Chambers. We knew about Fort Chambers before the city purchased that property, and we were so glad that the city purchased it because it gives our community an opportunity to really connect with this terrible part of our history and to move beyond the horrors of what happened in 1864 and ask ourselves, what kind of relationships can we build with Arapaho and Cheyenne and other indigenous peoples today? And that is our focus in Right Relationship Boulder. We think of the Fort Chambers property as, am I done? Golly. Well, that three minutes went very fast, but there are many other, other people here who are going to speak to specific issues that we'd like to raise for you.
Thank you. That did go fast, it seems like. Okay.
If Paula has her written comments, I imagine the board would be open to receiving those through an email?
Yeah, we would love that, Paula. If you have some written comments you'd like to add, you can email them to us. Thank you, Paula.
Okay. Next is Timothy Harmos, who I believe has joined us online. Okay. So Timothy, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Yes, hello. Appreciate you including me. I, I'm a little surprised. I wasn't quite sure how to work the event right, but it's nice to be included and thank you for, for having this hearing. I've been part of, well, I started out helping with RRB and their exploration of the history of Fort Chambers. And there's so much more to learn about it. It is a really important part of history and it's an important part of our own Boulder history, too. I grew up in Boulder, went to Boulder High. I still live in Boulder County. One of the things that has become clear in working with the tribal representatives is they also see it as a unique opportunity to tell the truth. That's the one thing that seems to be their, their bottom line is being able to tell the truth. They're really accustomed to telling their own truth of their stories, but they would like to offer us as, as settler citizens of Boulder, who tell the truth about our involvement in taking their land and what happened, both to us and to them. That's something that is done less often. There's more move toward that kind of effort with sites of conscience, which is a way of taking sites that have a fraught history and require a more fulsome explanation and a lot of sensitivity and just a lot of truth telling to come into the public sphere as, as part of our landscape of considering who we are and who we want to be, not just where we've been, but where we want to go. And I think that Fort Chambers is a place where we might be able to help support do that. And they are interested in where the fort was, but you know, we've got it dialed in close enough just from public historic records. So a representation on the site that people can visualize would be an important part of the, I think we're calling it next phase. So thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Timothy.
Okay. Next, we have Kristi Yoshinaga Itano, followed by Lori Rugenstein, and then Carol Affleck.
I'm also a member of Right Relationship Boulder, and we have a longtime relationship with the tribal representatives to open space and to the city council. And I guess my request to you is whether or not you would consider a postponement of approval of this plan, based on the fact that in our conversations, and they've been very recent and very intensive, they were just, the Southern Arapaho's were just here for a week and we spent a week with them. The one issue they say that they have brought up repeatedly at every interaction is where is the fort? And they don't feel that they have really gotten a concrete answer to that question. And they, they said they stopped asking that question after they were told that it was underwater, but they don't actually know how they know that it's underwater. So one of the things, I guess I would like to, they are grateful for the consultation. They're grateful that people have listened to them, but they also feel that in consultations that oftentimes people listen, but they don't always hear what it is that they're saying. And I guess I would like to put you in the place of, if you were descendants of one of the most horrific massacres in the history of your people and the people of Boulder on this property put together a militia that marched down to Sand Creek and murdered their ancestors, 230 plus of them, their elders, their chiefs, their children. How, how would you feel about a place that memorializes this event that has absolutely no structure on it, not even a, any indication of an outline where the fort was? And I guess what, the only example that I can give you is I'm a descendant of Japanese-Americans who were interned all over the, the west coast and also in Colorado, Atamachi, we had relatives there. Those places have become national monuments and in Amachi, for example, there were no buildings left on the property. And they, the buildings had been donated to local farmers and they went to all the local farmers asking for those buildings to be replaced on the property as well as the guard tower because they, it's a physical representative, representation of the event that has occurred. They don't want the fort built, but they would like some representation. Why didn't they fight for it? Well, they said basically that's the citizen of Boulder's responsibility. It's not our responsibility to tell the settler story. If you don't want to do this, then we're not going to argue. We're not going to try to convince you. This is your responsibility.
Thank you, Kristi. And you bring up some very interesting things to think about that I'd like to revisit when we get into more discussion. Next person.
We have next Lori Rugenstein, followed by Carol Affleck, and then Shirley Schaller.
I am Lori Rugenstein, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I want to really follow up with what Kristi said. It seems that a physical representation of some kind is really important because you have to see it to know it. Otherwise, people are just going to see landscape that looks pretty much like everything else in, in the rural part of Boulder County, beautiful fields, brooks and that kind of thing. But we, this has to be a site of conscience. It has to address what happened there, the horrors of what happened there, because we can't heal without knowing the truth of the past. So one thing that, that we at Right Relationship Boulder would like to request is to put a pause on the process, especially to review this piece about a representation of the fort, because that seems so important to the indigenous people. And it's up to us as descendants of the settler colonizers to do that, because that's the settler story. That's not the indigenous people's story. But we have to be honest about telling our part of the story. And I saw in, in your presentation that you want community input for that, and that's a place where Right Relationship Boulder would love to be at the table to give more input about the settler side of the story, including the fort, and presenting some kind of representation so people can actually see something. And it doesn't feel appropriate to include any information about the fort on the healing trail, because that's, that's supposed to be a place for meditation, contemplation, and healing, not a place to look at the difficult history of the past. So another possibility would be to use the Queen Anne House as a place to tell that settler side of the story, to have some kind of exhibit in there, telling about the fort and the history of how the town of Boulder was illegally built on land that was not settler land, that was actually treaty land of the indigenous people, was stolen and lots were sold for $1,000 apiece back in that day. So, you know, it was just taking advantage. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren. Before you step away, could you, I missed the part where you suggested that there could be some interpretation inside of one of the houses. Is that the larger house that you're suggesting or the smaller?
Either one would be good, but that shouldn't be on the healing trail. It should be somewhere else.
Got it. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Affleck, followed by Shirley Schaller, and then Jerilyn Dickatow.
Good evening. Carol Affleck speaking, Rural Historic Valmont, Valmont School District Number Four Cemetery Association. I am the person who listed the Builder County Poor Farm on the National Register. I have spent many, many hours there and many, many hours of research on that property. I am still spending hours of research on that property. In 2005, I served on the 2004 and 5 seat process of the city, which was a seat process on Valmont Butte. We worked with the elders from the tribes. We respected each other. We learned from each other. We included city council on that process. I have asked in my handout, which is a response to your survey, that we create something like that again. And I did put something on the seat process in there so that people can convene and respect each other and learn each other's perspectives. So we submitted a letter and it's to Katie, as part of our survey, we requested the National Historic Preservation Act be honored on this property, that all people's history will be honored and investigated. We also asked that city open space establish an equitable and inclusive consultation process as plans move forward on the site. We would like to address a consultation resolution on the marker, which is listed on the National Register. Every building there and every feature I listed on the National Register, and it is detailed at length in that nomination. If you don't have it, I would be happy to provide it to you. It'll tell you a lot about the property. We appreciate that the city is respectfully consulting with the tribes for the management plan. We request that the appropriate agricultural practices be implemented to provide good stewardship of the existing land, including irrigation, mowing, and all that's included in that. We had requested all of the historic farm structures and a farmhouse be assessed for preventative maintenance and properly restored with the Secretary of Interior standards. We do not support a physical recreation of Fort Chambers because we do not know where the fort is. I've spent a lot of time with an archaeologist that we engaged in 2005, who works with tribes and still consulting on that. We noticed that the city wants to provide cultural resource evaluation for the known or presumed Native American resources. We ask for that same thing for our cultural resources, that of the settlers. We are concerned about burials that occurred there during the poor farm time. We do have some evidence on that that we'd like to share and have shared. So we want to make sure that that's included in any consultation moving forward.
Carol, thank you so much. Unfortunately, your time is up, but we do have your document. Thanks for distributing this to us.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll, we'll read this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Shirley Schaller, followed by Jerilyn Dickatow, and then Melanie Muckel.
Hello, my name is Shirley Schaller, and I am the, well, my great aunt was the lady who had the marker erected on the, at the general site. Her name was Millie Gallagher, and actually it was Millie Chambers Gallagher, and she was my grandfather's sister-in-law. My mother helped her in getting this organized. I believe that the Boulder Historical Society helped with the verbiage on the marker, and it was erected approximately 1959, and I was able to attend that ceremony. There's a lot about the fort that is pretty difficult to discuss in three minutes, but due to oral histories, I do know that it was erected by local farmers. It was made out of sod that they got out of the ground and it was erected so they could protect their women and children at night, so they'd have a safe place to sleep. And it was not a military fort. It was built by the people. And it was begun in 1862, according to oral history records. And so that fort stood for two years before the Sand Creek massacre, and it was used for two weeks by soldiers from Boulder and Boulder County. And according to oral histories, that they, due to the size of the men, it was held outside and they were marching exercises. The fort was 100 feet by 125 feet. And so, and one corner of that was a building which the women and children would go to sleep if they felt like they were frightened. I would like the marker, which I don't believe was very well. Nobody checked to see who or how that was erected, or nobody was contacted when it was taken down. And I don't believe it was taken down nicely. It could have been dug up. They had a backhoe. When they took the backhoe and with a tow rope and it didn't come down, they took the bucket and yanked it down. And it broke above the base, and it is now in storage. And if that marker is not going to be included on the site, which I believe it should be, and I believe the actual history should be also written so people understand the original intent.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jerilyn Dickatow, followed by Melanie Muckel, and then Catherine Zimmerman.
Thank you. I'm Jerilyn Dickatow, and I'm a member of the Turtle Mountain Band of Tipuah and also part of Right Relationship Boulder. I want to thank Open Space and the Board of Trustees for allowing me to offer these comments. Until, until now, the only available information about Fort Chambers was the stone markers lie of the need to stop Indian uprisings. There were none. We in this room have come to know Boulder's part in the Sand Creek massacre, but collectively we do not. You presented a lot of statistics today, and statistics can help us make decisions, but someone once said, "Statistics are human beings with the tears wiped off." The same could be said of consultation. It has its limitations. If after all the planning, meeting, and input, the story is not fairly... the story is not fairly and fully told, that will be a great failing and a breach of faith with the tribes and with the people of Boulder. That would be difficult to fix. So, what the Arapaho and Cheyenne have said to us more than once, even if they haven't said this in consultation, is that they want a physical marker. Otherwise, people will not understand what actually happened here and truly grasp the impacts on their lives up to this very day. So, yes, we ask for a physical marker. The precise location of the fort is not needed. Contemporary evidence gets us very close. And in order to consider a marker, we actually need a delay in the approval of this plan. And here's the reason. In the design phase that we're moving into now, only minor changes will be made. A representation of Fort Chambers should be a major part of the plan. So, there should be a delay until there's a commitment to include a physical representation, to collaborate with the tribes in what should be included in the depiction, and to be sure the plan allows for greater focus on the history of Fort Chambers and the Arapaho and Cheyenne people who were removed from Boulder. Thirdly, I guess I had one and two. Our Right Relationship Boulder would like a seat at the table for ourselves as community members. We've never had a seat. We've tried to make noise, and I'm sure you've heard some of that. But we'd like an actual seat at the table. This is our community. We also want a seat because of the seven-year-long relationship we've had with the Arapaho and Cheyenne, which has made a difference in what we want for our Boulder community. So, finally, we urge Open Space to collaborate with others to help to do what OSMP cannot do by itself, for whatever reason, Boulder County Museum of Boulder Schools, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerilyn.
Next, we have Melanie Muckel, followed by Catherine Zimmerman, and then Jim Knopf.
Hi. My name is Melanie Julian Muckel. I grew up in Boulder, and I served for six years on the County Parks and Open Space Board, and 19 years on the County Parks and Open Space Foundation, and six years on the Board of Historic Boulder. So, I've been in a seat very similar to yours, and I thank you so much for your service because I know what it feels like. I, Historic Boulder had many meetings, several which that I personally attended with Parks and Open Space staff in 2018, prior to the purchase of the property, and emphasized at that time several of the points that other speakers have made. I agree that the National Historic Secretary of Interior Standards should be followed in all the work done on the structures. We, the structures, many of them have, most of them have really good integrity, especially the house. And so, we really urge that to be part of the plan. If it was there, I missed it. It's long. I also want to let you know that there is a, and maybe you already know this, but there's a America 250, Colorado 150 Initiative Commission, formed by the state legislature. And they are looking to recognize sites, 150 new sites that are important to underrepresented communities. So, this site qualifies in two regards, one of which has been discussed a lot here, which is the association with the tribes. The other one is the association with the Poor Farm. This place was a home for homeless people, poor people, mentally ill people. And that history and that part of the story would qualify for something, for the 150 site recognition for that history. There are many stories. The settler story is different than the tribal, the tribal story. The Poor Farm experience is another story. Historic Boulder endorses the telling of these different stories in ways that are sensitive and meaningful to visitors today. I really advocate for having part of the house be educational and have visitor access there. That house is beautiful. It's old, but it's beautiful. And I do think having visitor access to that is important. I'm out of time. I guess I'd like time to submit more comments to like Paula, if that would be okay. Thank you.
Next, we have Catherine Zimmerman, followed by Jim Knopf. And after those two speakers, we'll move to online comments. So, if you would like to speak and you're joining us online, you can raise your hand on Zoom.
Hi, my name's Kathy Zimmerman, and I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Heatherwood Elementary. And I forgot that you were Katie. I didn't recognize you were Katie. But I just wanted to speak a little bit from a kid's perspective and how important the history of Colorado, the history of Boulder, is to them. I've been teaching Indigenous or American Indian or Native American Studies for about six years now at Heatherwood. And we bring in Indigenous people. Jerilyn comes in every year and talks about the boarding schools. And we bring in different tribal members to come and talk. We go on field trips. And when we, when I talk to them about the Fort Chambers being a possibility of a place to learn from, they got very excited and decided to send letters. And I don't know if you got to see any of them, but I brought a couple of them up and passed through. You can see that with ideas about what's important to them and how they learn. And they learn by seeing and feeling and touching and hearing what went on in history. And they get very attached and very engaged in what's, what did happen. And they have been really excited about learning this history because it's not in our history books. And other cultures are not represented in our history books the way the colonizers have written our history. And so, to have a place that has a structure that they can touch and feel, and a place where they can go and learn about their history, about the history of this land, and a place where they can pay respect and provide reparation and reconciliation to these tribes would be really special and very important for the kids in our community and for all of us. And so, my request is that you consider something that kids can relate to, a structure that would be tangible that with also educational pieces that really tell the truth and what really happened. And not, it doesn't have to be in a way that's angry or, you know, mean. It's just the truth. And the kids deal with the truth very well. We talk about the boarding schools and the traumas that went on and the, what happened at Fort Chambers, being, the people being trained to go and commit this massacre. And we don't have to go into detail, but we, they know. And they really, and it's like, it's deep depth of knowledge. They get it. And it stays with them. And they, for them to be activists later on in helping to equalize and learn about other people and accept everybody. And that's kind of our purpose, so.
Thank you.
Would you like to see, did you get to see any of the letters? I think I sent them to Katie. But they have some ideas about, you know, things that you can do. And if you have them, you can look at them later.
Thank you, Catherine. We'll take a look at that.
They enjoyed being an activist, too. Thank you.
Next, we have Jim Knopf.
Jim, Jim Knopf, I'm encouraged by quite a bit of what I've heard tonight. There's been a lot of good thought put into this really special site. I was actually on the Open Space Board when we had to struggle with finding a potential Native American ceremonial site. And it was like, what do we do now? But the building actually has been relocated, and things have worked out pretty well. I've also been involved with Right Relations Boulder for quite a while. Have a lot of respect for what they've done. My main point right now is just to encourage ongoing support and involvement with the people you've heard tonight, especially Right Relations. But there's been some other good input also. So, I would just encourage ongoing involvement of these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
If you're joining us online and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom. Okay, I'm seeing no hands online. No hands online.
No hands online. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open up for discussion amongst the board members. Did you?
We did just get a hand.
Okay. We'll reopen it.
Okay, thank you. Just one, thank you. So, we do have one hand from Bonnie Sundance. And Bonnie, you should be able to unmute yourself now.
I am Bonnie Sundance, and also a member of Right Relationship Boulder. And I'm really thrilled with all the testimony of all the people who have spoken tonight. And I think that the possibilities of this becoming a very dynamic site that engages people and assists them to face a history that is still impacting us because personally, I'm very disappointed that we don't have, there is one Arapaho person living in Boulder, one. And that's Ava Hamilton. And, you know, I want more, the presence of Native people here. And I think that if our town and our county can understand what was done to remove Native people intentionally, that I think that bringing our conscience to bear is really important. So, this project has, you know, it's much more than just handling things on a physical level or even an educational level. It has definitely also a spiritual component to bring healing. The potentiality for that, I think, is very important. So, I also ask the board to consider postponing until what Kathy Zimmerman mentioned and a couple of other people mentioned of creating some kind of design for helping people to visually see. It would be great to also have, you know, in the house, to have recordings of Native voices talking about some of this. And to also express, I was really moved by the woman who said she was part of that stone marker, her family. You know, the side of the story of the fear of the settlers. So, I do encourage you to postpone approval tonight and make sure that the design gets fully expressed to include these other elements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No other hands.
Okay, great. All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Thanks for all who participated. I'm going to turn it over to my fellow trustees. I think that maybe there are some questions. And I have a few of mine, but I'm going to let anybody who wants to raise their hand go first. So, we'll start with questions and deliberation. Anybody want to go first?
Sure, I'm happy to go first. I'll start with a couple of comments on this process. This has been a really exciting project, you know, to be involved in as a board member since I've joined. It's always exciting when I see it on the agenda. And it's been great to work with the tribal representatives. We got to meet with them at a board meeting a couple of months back. And it's been a very humbling experience, you know, meeting with them and talking with them. Because a lot of what I think might be respectful or good on the site, you know, after chatting with them, it's, you know, they're looking for quite the opposite. In regards to, you know, some of what we talked about today, we asked about having a physical marker of the fort to the tribal representatives at the meeting. And I don't know if I'm remembering it word for word, but their response was, "Some things are best left buried," if I recall correctly. They were not interested in us having, finding the site of the fort. One of the other comments that really stuck with me from that meeting was they said that our story has been told. It's time to tell your story, the settler's story. So, I, it was a, it was a very memorable meeting for me. I remember a lot of what was said, and it's really stuck with me since. So, I appreciate the detail that's, you know, gone into the plan and this work and the collaboration with the representatives. Do we, do we have any more details at this point on what sorts of, you know, interpretation, you know, might be on the site? Or is that going to come later in the process? Do we have a sense of?
I'll just provide a very broad answer and then let Katie and Casey follow up and, excuse me, for my voice. The purpose of this first phase of developing a concept plan was to answer some very general questions. Do we want this to be a site of contemplation and education interpretation? Do we want to continue agriculture? Do we want to even continue to own this property as a city and manage it as open space? What is the fate of the building? So, some of those things. And the concept plan was meant to kind of provide a yes, no to some of those broad elements, as we call them. And so, what we're bringing forward to it is, we've answered some of those, is yes, we should retain the house. Yes, we should restore the house. Yes, we should continue agriculture. Yes, this should be a healing place where interpretation and education is conducted. Yes, this should be a place for contemplative recreation. And yes, this should be a place for restoration and ecological restoration. So, that was the purpose of this phase. Exactly the details of all of that, including the design of the ecological restoration, including what should be on a sign. Should we do more than signs? What should be in a monument or a piece of artwork or a representation? All of that is phase two. So, I personally am really enthused with what we heard tonight because I think it's in line for where we're heading. It just, those very specific details was really not the purpose of the broader concept plan. But yes, all that is to come is to kind of envision all that and continue to have our collaboration and consultation with the tribes and more intensive engagement with the community on that.
Thank you, Dan. That was the sense I got as well. I was just kind of looking to confirm that. It does feel like there's a lot of alignment here about the direction we're taking it and that, you know, we'll have the opportunity to figure out a lot of those details in the next phase, if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Would it be possible to show that slide that shows the 10 years again? I'd just like to see that again. And where some of these questions could potentially be answered in those 10 years. And while we're doing that, I guess there was a comment earlier that, and that leads to something you said earlier, or you asked about earlier, Sarah, like, what is the plan for engagement in the future? And I know we have an MOU that possibly needs to get renewed. But if we close the site for the next 10 years, would we still be able to invite some of the tribal representatives to be part of that evolution during the next 10 years, even though the site itself is closed?
Yes, we can, we have visited the site with the tribal representatives, and that's still a possibility while the site's under restoration. It's just not open to the general public because there'll be, you know, major restoration going on on the site during that time. So, it's anticipated to stay closed during the restoration. We do understand the community's desire to recognize this site. And so, as we said, there's an initial roadside area right before you got into the site. And so, we are hoping to collaborate and design and look and figure out what that should be. So, at least there is one place for people to go while the restoration is occurring, and then design the rest of it. So, we are hoping to start the collaborative design process soon. We're starting to have discussions with the tribes. Once again, stay. discussions with the tribes. Once again, if we need to renew the MOU, what does that process look like? And start that process with the community. The yellow there is the Healing Trail. And so then the dark is that first initial interpretive element and then continued collaboration design. It's a little bit of both because we'd like to design the initial roadside, you know, holistically in conjunction with the Healing Trail. And we know that it could, you know, there might be a temporary solution where maybe we decide that that is one thing, and then we would like to evolve it as the rest of the trail goes open. So we're leaving for those possibilities, right? We know we need to continue that design. We'll continue those discussions before implementation. Katie, just for something. Did you want to see the 10-year one, Michelle, or does this one?
Actually, it was this one that I wanted to see, that shows this going over the next 10 years. So the places where, like, the topics that we heard this evening were having some place, some representation of where the fort is, not like exactly knowing where it is, but, but some representation that it was there, indication that it was there. Is that decision, like, I'm just trying to think, like, do we really need to hit pause? Or do, or is this really built into your plan already?
That's built into the plan already. That is the, that is the yellow, the lighter yellow on the Healing Trail. So especially that first shorter term, we know that there's interest in having those discussions soon. And so it's built in as part of the next phase, yes.
Okay. And even though it's under the Healing Trail, that some of this could occur in the actual structure?
Correct, yeah. We did, for brevity's sake, do Healing Trail, but it could have been slash interpretation probably would have been more accurate, but Healing Trail and slash interpretive elements.
Right. Because the historic house improvements kind of sounds like we're going for the improvements design and permitting rather than considering some of these concepts happening in one of those houses.
Yeah, I guess one thing I'd like to add about the, about the house and the kind of educational opportunities there. We had several discussions about, you know, different uses for the house. And one thing that came out of those discussions is really learning that the house itself wasn't a place that felt welcoming to everybody. And so we didn't, so we kind of wanted to steer away from having too much educational information in the house because we want it to be accessible and in a place where people would feel comfortable. So the house itself, as far as educational opportunities, with an agricultural tenant, you know, potentially living in the house, what we were thinking was there could be, maybe there's some information in the house, but there could be some tours and things that could be coordinated with the, with the tenant. And that would be more about, you know, education, the opportunities would be more focused about like the historic structure and some of the, the history of the poor farm and more of the history related to the house versus related to the tribes.
Yeah, can I just, I want to ask another question that came up. Is it feasible to give RRB a seat at the table in this? And is it, does that seem like a reasonable thing in the next steps to give them a seat at the table when we're talking about design?
So for the next phase, we really do want to work with community members, you know, people that want to be involved in this project. As far as exactly, you know, and I would, they have such great history and relationships with, with the tribes and passion. I can imagine that they would be involved in the project. Exactly, you know, how big of a group or what that planning process looks like, we're not quite sure. But that's something that we imagine that we'd be working together.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
I was so busy listening, I kind of lost my train of thought. So are we just in questions or are there, is there room for comments now? Okay. In general, I have so much appreciation for open space and the staff and the planning in the city, in our ability to maintain integrity with structures and with ecology. And I really do think this is a unique situation when we start to dive into cultural integrity and what it means when we start talking about healing, not just the land, but the people, the residents, the inhabitants of the land, especially with such a difficult, complex, and rich history with overlapping, we'll call them stories and narratives. I do believe, you know, within our purview, we spend a lot of time focused on ecology and on recreation. I think the education component of our charter, what we are here to do also is to educate the public, is something that we need to very strongly consider as a priority for this location. I did hear in the comments and really resonate, I feel very aligned with the notion that the Healing Trail should be preserved for healing and quiet and solitude and meditation and this essence. I think I'm really, I can really feel the intention there. And I hear that the idea of trying to incorporate, trying to weave in some of these more difficult stories, some of the different experiences in a way that is really about truth is part of the healing, but being confronted with the truth or some of the uglier, harder, more difficult truths while being on a meditation walk on a Healing Trail, trying to reconnect with the land, trying to appreciate the spirit that was here before all of this occurred. I don't really see how those things fit together. And I would really like for us to ensure that the education, however we're designing and allocating land here, that we are letting those, these things coexist on the land in distinct and separate spaces. I do hear that we're looking at tenancy for, for the residential, for the house, and that there is a historical aspect there. And I'm not sure that that is the best location. I also hear that it may not be so important that we find the exact pinpointed location where this fort existed so much. I'm seeing nodding heads out here. So, so much as we designate some structure or some space for this. In terms of postponing, I mean, I actually, I feel pretty strongly that healing requires time and pause. And so if we do need more time and we need to pause to ensure that we are truly taking this opportunity to heal the cultural history in addition, before we jump right into the ecological restoration and the building restoration and the toilets and all of the necessary things that we do need to get to bring people onto the site. I really, I personally believe that we might be moving too fast. And, and I want to say that with, by also acknowledge, and also acknowledge that I'm new to this board and I was not here for the meeting in March. But I do see that we have nine or more people making, showing up for this full evening to make comments. And I would definitely like to ensure that if we do decide to move forward, that we move forward, if we do decide to go ahead with this, that we somehow ensure that this community will have voice in the process. I didn't, I'm not convinced by the responses of the staff, and I know you guys are so amazing and your hearts are in this, but I'm not convinced that we have enough assurance for the community, for the Indigenous community or the settlers' citizen community that we're really encouraging participation or giving them a clear sense of how we are planning to do that and intending to do that. The best of intentions often kind of get lost in the shuffle. So I'd love for us to maybe be creative in how we can ensure that voices are included and that though we want, though we move things forward, we take the time to preserve, not just to conserve and restore the integrity of the land and the buildings, but also the integrity of the community and allow for the complexity. And then the last thing is that I really appreciate that we had letters from the children. I do intend to read those and I intend to write back. So thank you for including that.
Thanks, Sarah. Do you want to weigh in?
People are additional callers, I have to wait for them.
Okay. You can speak next. I guess the way I'm feeling right now is I just feel kind of conflicted. In part because I think we, I know everybody here wants to respect everybody's history, not just the, I mean, there, there's the poor farm, of course, and then there's the settlers and obviously the people who were harmed by the Sand Creek massacre. There's a lot of, a lot of things to weigh in here and allow all those histories to be represented. And we heard that in the March meeting from the tribal representatives that they also want to hear the settler's side of the story too. And I distinctly remember having that conversation with them, that cold, winter, snowy March evening that we spent with them. And so I feel a little bit conflicted about hitting pause on a 10-year project that's going to incorporate some of the elements that you're actually asking for. But I guess, I get that, that to feel comfort, to feel comfortable in moving forward in the process, you'd like some assurance that you're going to actually be involved in that design process. And that's what I'm hearing is if you get the assurance that you're going to be involved in that process, we can move beyond just the concept of the concept plan, which is really what this was intended to be, is to identify all of the different ways that we could approach it and then head into design. And this is a typical process within OSMP. So I feel conflicted. I want to make sure that you all feel heard and you have a seat at the table. I also don't want this to add another five years in implementing a Healing Trail. That's, that's way overdue. Potentially, I'm making, I'm just picking a number out of the air, but I feel kind of, yeah, pretty conflicted about that.
So, you know, I guess what I'm thinking is that this is a, this is a concept plan we're being asked to weigh in on. And it's, it's not an implementation plan. And, and so I think that, you know, I have to say that I'm leaning towards, you know, not putting a pause on it because there is so much room for the kind of community collaboration and developing the interpretive elements of this site that we're being asked to encourage and we're being asked to invite. And I think that's really worthwhile. So I think that what our role could be as the board is to try to tweak this concept plan in a way that makes folks comfortable with what is the concept for moving forward. And I have to say, you know, I was incredibly moved by the tribal elder who talked about telling the settlers' story in our March meeting. And I told him so. I said, you know, I cannot believe the generosity of spirit that it takes to say that you want to hear the oppressor's story. And, and as I've thought about that over and over again in the last few months, one of the things that I've realized is that it wasn't just generous, it was incredibly smart. That, you know, you're not going to get the kind of healing that this is meant to, to provide unless both sides, you know, tell their stories. And, and to have sort of a, you know, a monolith on one side and a sensitively told story on the other side doesn't make for healing. And, and so I, you know, I really, I think that that has just got to be a part of this. And, and so I think opening up the table to those different viewpoints for the interpretation is really important and needs to happen. So some of the suggestions that I have for how the concept plan might be amended is, you know, in that, I guess it's on page, in that color-coded plan recommendations and phasing and attachment C on page 19, one thing to do in, under a short term, one to two years, maybe we remove the bullet for installation of a roadside interpretive area in that, in that first phase. You know, maybe we shouldn't be jumping into implementation in the first year or two. You know, it doesn't mean it can't happen, but, but maybe until everybody's comfortable with how the interpretation is happening, we shouldn't be jumping into implementation of an actual exhibit or an interpretive area. Maybe we should add a bullet regarding dealing with the physical representation of the fort, because that came up so many times that, you know, putting that into the concept plan so that it is known that that's a priority for Fort Chambers, the project would, would serve to help to focus people's attention on that and make sure that folks know that that is a major part of the interpretation that's being considered. Maybe add a bullet related to community collaboration in developing the content for the Healing Trail and the other interpretive elements, including the fort. And make it really clear that, you know, I know that in the interests of brevity, on the 10-year slide, it just said Healing, Healing Trail, right? But clearly, there are other areas where interpretive elements can go, in the parking lot, you know, in the path to the Healing Trail, you know, maybe in one of the buildings. Maybe there will be a new building. But, but I think that making it clear that there are multiple possibilities for the location of interpretive elements and the Healing Trail is not the catch-all for that would help to clarify what this concept plan is driving at. So, you know, I think that for me, that's, that's what I'd like to add. And that, I think, is a piece that we can, you know, we can add that as an advisory board. And that, that I think respects the notion of what a concept plan is.
Harman, if I could just comment on your, more of your last comment. So the Healing Trail, again, I guess our mistake in summarizing a whole bunch of interpretive elements into that one word. There's going to be a roadside interpretive element. There'll be interpretive element opportunities throughout, between the roadside and the parking area before you even get to quote unquote, the Healing Trail. So in the concept plan, there is envisioned interpretive elements, starting actually at the property boundary.
I think that that's right. And it shows on the map. And, and I, I'm just suggesting that these sorts of clarifying bullets that I'm suggesting would just make that more prominent and more clear for the public as they read the concept plan. But I understood that that was already in there. Thank you.
Can I propose a compromise, potentially, rather than, I mean, that's one way is to dig into the plan itself. I'm wondering if we can, in our motion, clarify some of the things that we want, rather than going into the document itself and, and then putting on the public record what we would like to see. Would you be open to that?
Yeah, no, Michelle, I think that's, that's exactly what we should do.
Okay. So if I can read my notes, I'm thinking that we could add to, if we wanted to move this forward so that the process could continue, oh yeah, thank you, that we could add a recommendation that OSBT requests that the design process includes consideration of representation of the physical fort. I don't know if that's the right word, representation of the fort. It doesn't need to be in the exact spot, but representation of the fort and includes all histories and provides continued collaboration with tribal representatives and other community members.
When we say like a representation of fort, are we talking like a sign potentially or?
I mean, I guess to be determined in the design process and the collaboration process, whether that belongs in the building, whether that, in one of these buildings, or whether it belongs on a sign. I think, yeah, I'd like to leave that a little bit more vague. To be, to be determined, you know, through collaboration.
Yeah.
What, can you, can you read it to me one more time?
Try to do that.
Thank you for, thank you for wordsmithing on the spot. Nice.
Michelle, if you're reading it again, I'll actually capture it this time. Do you want that as a second sentence though, or is it replacing language that's in there?
I was thinking that it would be an additional sentence beyond what's there, unless my lawyer.
Leah, can I make a suggestion? We're mixing here the mad with the, I think we should take the natural area management designation completely out of this, if it's up, if it's okay with you, Michelle, and have two separate guidances here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, so right now, I think they are making what they would like to be expressed going forward in relationship to the concept plan.
Correct. So, right. So it doesn't have anything to do with the designation, the management area designation. So I was thinking it would be a separate section here that OSBT requests that the design process includes consideration of representation of the fort and includes all histories.
Slow down.
Sorry. Okay. And includes all histories and provides continued collaboration with tribal representatives and community members. And that's all community members, but especially the RRB folks. Does that seem like a good compromise? I just hate to, I'm, these plans take a long time to implement, and I do worry that if we were to hit pause, that we could be adding a substantial amount of time to something that needs to happen sooner rather than later. I don't want to rush the design or collaboration process, but I do feel like that's built into the plan, and as long as people are being included in that process, you'll end up getting what you want in that process.
So, should we say a physical representation of the fort? Because I think I'm hearing that. Am I hearing correctly that there is a request for a physical representation, a place that people can go to? That's very true for us. We need a physical place to go to, not just a picture or written words, but a physical And then, represent, representation is a pretty broad term when we talk about, we have tribal representatives and the community. I still, I'm just wanting some kind of clarity around, just some safety for every, all the stakeholders to know that there's more than just a survey going out that's going to end up being another statistic that we're all reading, more than just making comments, but actually having stakeholder engagement in the design process. And I was trying to clarify, I'm trying to understand what the realistic process is, so that we can be very clear that the goal here is to have stakeholder groups represented, including the settler citizens and including, like, the more recent history. I think we've done, it sounds like we've done a really good job of that tribal history and stakeholder input, and what has been requested or is being requested is more input now, next, on the settler history. So should we say something about, instead of just the community, maybe tribal representatives and settler historical or stories, or, I'm not the wordsmith here.
I'm not great at wordsmithing either.
Yeah, include physical representation.
If.
Include a physical representation of the fort.
It's so hard to edit on the fly, to group, yeah, wordsmith. It is really hard.
And include all histories. Should we say all or diverse? That diverse histories? All, all is good because that will be diverse. And?
I guess I would, I would like to keep the phrase "community" and not call out different, yeah, yeah, specific groups. We'd like to be as inclusive of whatever that shape that takes.
Uh huh. Uh huh. Can we have feedback from the audience?
Yeah, I'm supportive of any compromise to move this forward. I think I heard a lot more agreement with the direction it's going tonight than the disagreement, so, you know, if we can tweak it slightly to move it forward, I would like to see it move forward.
Would anybody like to make a motion, actually, and put it on the floor, or do you want it before?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
So I'm still a little, not too happy with the way this is, because I don't know if we, if we want to request that the design process include a physical representation of the fort. I think we want to let the members of the communities who are helping to tell the story decide what, if any, physical representation of the fort exists in the final design. And so I, I just...
Intentionally include?
I had something like, you know, that we recommend that staff continue community collaboration, including tribal representatives, members of the Valmont community, and other interested community members who can help in the telling of all the stories related to the site, in developing content for the healing trail and the other interpretive elements, including potentially a physical representation of the fort.
Dang, nice.
Does that capture it a little more? I can email that to you if you want to.
Can you throw it up there? Email it and throw it up there. I have to, I think, read it. Is it, can we?
Yeah, I'm not saying it's perfect.
Yeah, I think it's getting a lot closer. I like it, yeah. I'm curious, from the people sitting here, are you feeling like we're moving closer? Can we ask that, or we just have to die? Okay, great, okay. Sorry. Okay.
So we have the pub, just to, Sarah is new to the board, we had our public input, and, but this is now the board action.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. While we're doing that, I'll just talk about, like, I don't know who it was who said they were in our seats. I don't know that anybody's really been in our seat. It's like, last meeting, it was so hot, and now this meeting, it's so cold. And like, I just, this place drives me crazy. I just happened to have a jacket with me tonight because I biked here, but otherwise I'd be pretty miserable. Okay, here we go. So you would strike the whole next section of that, or just delete the second?
I'll move, I will move it down. Where, do you want it to start? After concept plan? Where are we adding it to?
It requests that the design process include, right after include?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's replacing the language we had. Okay.
Harmon, could I just suggest one thing for the board to consider? The word collaboration, so we, it's tricky when, because we have, as you know, at the city, we have actually formal terms for the level of engagement, and then we have consultation, which is a formal process that we have with tribal nations. And so just wondering if the word collaboration here could be further clarified with how the city and the staff is directed to engage at different levels with the community, and what we were suggesting, and you could go against it, is we would have the consult, the consult with the tribes and the involve with the community as the two areas, and both of them have definitions to them within the city engagement spectrum that was developed and approved by council through a community process, in fact. And so, for us, it would help, collaboration, for helps, if it would, if we, if you would entertain those terms, it would be more specific to staff, exactly what we're following.
So what if after include it said consultation and community involvement?
That would be consistent with the framework. Yeah, as collaboration is to partner in decision-making, and involve is to, you know, really involve the community, but, you know, it's one step below like that collaboration and consultation, so.
So then maybe change including to with, after the parenthetical, no, no, including, no, right after the parenthetical, after involvement? Yeah, with, there.
I guess as long as invol, I'm sorry, involvement doesn't mean another survey. I mean, I think that's, that's what we...
We showed you a slide of what involve means, and we'd be happy to put that definition up again.
That was more consult, like, we would like your feedback, that was consultation, like, a consult, I don't want to say consultation, a consult, and then involve is more enhanced than that. So it's an increased level of input into the decisions.
It does look like we're calling out a specific group there with the Valmont community, and I don't know who said it earlier that we shouldn't call out a specific group, but...
Yeah, I mean, I thought about taking all that out, but then I looked at the language that we had that we just replaced, and it included communities.
Specific communities?
I think I said community, not the Valmont community.
Yeah, but you also had, I think you had tribal, I can't remember what you had, but...
Tribal representatives and community members.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I'm not wedded to leaving Valmont community in, I just think that, you know, we heard testimony from members of the old Valmont, the old town of Valmont tonight, and, you know, there are still the descendants of Chambers that can tell the story. We heard that tonight, so that's why I put it in, but if you want, if you want to take it out and just talk about the community at large, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I would feel more comfortable that way. I wouldn't want anyone to feel left out if the rest of the board's open to that.
Okay, yeah.
So maybe just take out the comma and take out members of the Valmont community with tribal representatives and take out other.
Yeah. Exactly. And interested community members who can help in the telling of all stories related to the site, that's nice.
In the next, it says, "in developing content for the healing trail," is there something, a similar conversation to be had around the word "content"? Is there, is there something more specific that would align with the language?
No, there wasn't a specific term. We'd used "developing interpretive elements" in the concept plan, but I think "content" is clear, but that was, "elements" is what we used in the concept plan, that's helpful.
Okay. What do you guys think of changing it to interpretive?
So interpretive elements is down there too, so in developing content for the healing trail and other interpretive elements.
Ah, great, okay, great.
Does anybody want to push, want to put forth a motion? I see a hand, but I'm sorry, we can't reopen public input, sorry.
I think it's important to include at least...
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion? And we can always do a friendly amendment if we...
Dan, when you suggested we separate this, were you suggesting two separate motions or just one, one motion?
Yeah, two separate. I think because you wanted to expand it, I think it would be clearer if it was...
Two separate?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm happy to make the first motion. I'll move that the Open Space Board of Trustees assign the Fort Chambers/Poor Farm property and natural area management area designation, MAD in parentheses.
I'll second.
Do we want to have any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? If not, I'll do the roll call. Harmon?
Okay, yes.
John?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So first motion passes unanimously. Okay, I think this has got to be you, Harmon.
All right, then, I move to advance and implement the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Concept Plan and request, so I'm not, do we want to request? You want to do the request?
Hey, I think that's appropriate. We can't direct staff to do things.
True. All right, so then I move that the Open Space Board of Trustees advance and implement the, well, we're not advancing and implementing it. I just, I'm just going to say, the Open Space, I move to advance and implement the Fort Chambers Poor Farm Concept Plan and request the design process include consultation and community involvement with tribal representatives and interested community members who can help in the telling of all the stories related to the site, in developing content for the healing trail and other interpretive elements, including potentially a physical representation of the fort.
Do you want me to second that? Okay, I'll second that.
Thanks.
Just to clarify, Harmon, you took out the Open Space Board of Trustees piece of that, right? So you just, you moved to advance?
Yeah, I just don't...
Strike the "the" Open Space Board of Trustees, Leah, we lost it. Or delete it.
We started by Harmon moved to advance.
All right, gotcha.
Right, and generally, you know, in the way that these things work, if one person makes the motion, then it's seconded. The chair would then say, you know, if the motion's been seconded, says the board moves to advance, right? So, I'm just saying, it's not that, I'm not moving the board to advance the plan because the staff's advancing the plan.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, let's go ahead, so if we don't have any other deliberation on this motion that's on the floor, let's go ahead and call, do a roll call. We'll start this way this time. Sarah?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And Harmon?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, so it passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, staff, for engaging in this process for the last couple of years, and thanks so much for everybody for spending your Wednesday evening here instead of at the farmer's market, which looked really fun over there.
Popsicles.
And popsicles, yeah. Go have a hot cup of coffee or cocoa.
Are you saying there are popsicles at the farmer's market, or you've become popsicles?
We've become popsicles here, I think. Okay, do we want to take a five-minute break? Okay, let's take a five-minute break. Warm up. Thank you all, we're resuming the meeting now. Sorry, that actually took a little bit longer than I said it was going to, but in part because we are freezing here, and it's way warmer back there, but we were able to get something hot, and that took us a little bit more time. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Dan.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle. We have a couple of matters from the department. We're going to start off with a fairly brief item, and this is an item that is related to something new, a community-facing interactive map that the Open Space Mountain Parks Department developed in order to showcase and to show community some of the major capital projects that are going to be occurring or are currently occurring on the Open Space system. And it's sort of a way for our community to be able to interface us and what may be happening near them or areas that they're interested in. And so we're going to have members of our RIS team present this because there are, they're the technology wizards that make a lot of stuff that we do happen behind the scenes, and the spotlight usually doesn't get to shine on them, but they do a lot of work in sort of making our work be able to happen. And so leading that discussion of working us, introducing us to that interactive map is going to be John Morley, GIS manager for Open Space and Mountain Parks. is going to be John Morley, GIS manager for Open Space and Mountain Parks. And John, I'm sure is gonna call out his work group and some of the good work that they do for us, so welcome, John.
Awesome, thanks, Dan, and thanks for having me, everyone, tonight. As Dan just said, I'm John Morley and I'm the Geographic Information Systems or GIS manager for O S and P. GIS is part of a larger resource information services team that provides support for data projects, applications and technology that are specific to O S and P operations. RIS and GIS are primarily internal service groups that do a lot of work behind the scenes to support O S and P. But our webpages and mapping applications are some of the most visible things we create and maintain for staff and public use. Tonight, I'm here to highlight some of our recent work, including the department's virtual open house pages that were just released a couple of weeks ago. Just to start, one of our resources that you're probably already familiar with is our main mapping site at O S and P trails.org, and I'm gonna do a quick screen share. Great.
Oh.
Or maybe not. There it goes.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah. With O S and P trails.org, citywide, it's our most heavily accessed mapping application. And in terms of all of our web content, it's frequently only behind the main bouldercolorado.gov landing page in terms of visits from the public. O S and P trails displays a lot of our trail and trailhead information, it's got locations, amenities, regulations, as well as our active closures and alerts across the system, you can click through and see lots of detail about things. Search, pan, everything that you're interested in. We also share our data, including our active closures, with our partner agencies who incorporated into their maps and apps as well. Over the years, we've been working to improve accessibility of the resources we provide. And the new splash screens that you'll start to see in many of our mapping resources are one element of a recent push we've been making to meet city and statewide digital accessibility expectations. Maps can be really effective ways to convey information, but they also have a lot of challenges when it comes to accessibility, including being able to distinguish and interpret symbols or read labels for users with differences in vision, or being able to fully utilize an application without using a mouse. We're working to make our applications more accessible to everyone, and the new splash screens that we're adding, as in this lovely one for O S and P trails, offer a summary of what's in the map, provide some other means to get to the same information, and a way to report issues or request assistance with accessing the information. In the case of O S and P trails, we link back to a few locations, including our trail and trailhead pages, which have filters that you can use to search by name, look for different trails that suit different mobility needs, go to different difficulties, different activities that you're interested in, and for our trailheads, you can search by amenities, fees, if you want to go to one that doesn't have a fee for out of Boulder County residents, check the status, make sure it's open or closed, and usage, in my case, I love trailheads that have a bathroom. And so I'm just gonna go to open trailheads with a restroom. When I click into one of the trailheads that looks interesting to me, I get a page with picture of the trailhead, a little bit of information about the status, usage, including that it's a typically low used trailhead, some descriptions, a lot of the amenity descriptions, dog regulations, connecting trails, tons of information. We also have a link back to our trail map, and if we click into that link, it'll take us directly to that location. Again, I'll just close my splash screen and go directly there. Let's see. So the related resources contain a lot of the same information by design and help to meet our accessibility goals. Tonight, we wanted to talk about and show off the virtual open house offerings the department just released a couple of weeks ago. Since the adoption of the master plan, O S and P has been working to improve how we track and report out on our progress to the community. We've held in-person open houses for our projects for a long time. And in recent years, we found that the virtual open house format expands access to a group that's ten to twenty times larger than our in-person events with less staff requirement required. We do get our biggest rush of visits right around the release, but the virtual format allows the community to continue to be able to access this information on their schedule, including when they see work occurring on the ground and come to our sites looking for more info. In the two weeks since announcing the release, the web map has received more than seven hundred views, and our text webpage is approaching four hundred views, a lot more than can make it to a typical one night only in-person event. O S and P as a department has over three hundred projects on our work plan for the year. The virtual open houses, web map and webpage highlight just a handful of our larger projects that staff feel the community would be most interested, including those big on-the-ground capital projects that Dan mentioned. With that lengthy intro, I'd like to share a bit of how they work with you all. The easiest way to access the information is to start by visiting our main site at O S and P dot org. From our department page, we currently have a large splash that points you to our interactive project map, list of project improvements and a press release. If you go down to our press release section, we also have a link to the press release there. The release discusses our virtual open house webpage, the interactive project map, and the list of twenty twenty-three projects and accomplishments that we've posted. Back on the map, on the left-hand side, we start with a summary of projects within the current view and account for each type of project. We can expand each category and subcategory to view additional detail on the projects that are occurring on the system. From the map, you can click on a project and it will bring up a summary and a timeframe for the project. From the list, you can also click on a project and it will pull up the same information. The list is handy in that if you're interested in a particular area, you can zoom into the area and the list will filter to just projects occurring in that area, so for Boulder Valley Ranch, we can see that there's even just in that small area, a lot going on. Hit back to home to get to all of our projects. And let's just take a quick tour of some of the projects that we have going on on the system this year. Or highlight some of those projects, at least. Agriculture has a few projects or a few classes of projects that are occurring this year. Our facility rehabilitations and land restoration and soil health projects are primarily to improve agricultural functions of our lands. We do have some projects under land restoration to also work on restoring native plant communities in the presence of prairie dogs on former degraded agricultural lands. Under our prairie and wetland restoration, we have a number of discrete projects to restore areas, and we also have one large wetland mapping project to do a system-wide evaluation of our wetlands and start building up a better wetland monitoring and management program, which is also supported by a large federal grant. Invasive species management is a system-wide issue, but we've chosen just to highlight a few of our projects. One of our big ones this year is Mediterranean sage control, and we're doing that on a number of properties. We're also highlighting the Shanahan tall oatgrass grazing project, which has had a lot of success in using cattle and grazing to manage our tall oatgrass infestation in the area. With our native seed program, it occurs system-wide, but we use volunteers to collect a lot of native seed that we use in our restoration projects. Our forest thinning projects are practices that we use to improve habitat and mitigate fire risk, and we've highlighted three major projects with a variety of specific goals that you can get to by clicking on each project. With trailhead planting and improvements, we also have a big focus on a number of different goals, improving our visitor amenities like parking, bike racks, restrooms, and we have a focus on physical accessibility during those improvements, while also enhancing the trailhead areas using native vegetation to support our wildlife and pollinators. Our trail projects frequently get the most attention, and we've separated those into three different categories. We've got some of our major new trail construction projects, with North Sky being one of the highlights, we're all very excited to be opening that later this summer. We've got some major trail reroutes that are intended to improve trail sustainability while improving visitor experience. And some trail repair projects, we're always doing trail repair around the system, and not just in these areas, but these are some of the larger massive projects that we have. Mount Sanitas is an ongoing project, but in these years, it's supported by a new federal grant that we just received. In terms of just general map navigation and finding things, we've got a handful of other tools besides the list to work with. We have a locate me tool so that if you're on a mobile device and you want to see the projects near you, you can pull it up also on your computer, if you want to see the projects near your home, you can click on that and have it zoom to your current location. We have a home button, which, since I haven't zoomed into my location, isn't doing anything, but it will take you back to the full extent and all of the properties, zoom in, zoom out. If you're interested in searching for a particular project and you don't know what category it's under, you can search the projects and also our trails and trailheads from the search. Got a handful of other tools at the top, including a way to display just a regular legend, switch out your base map, show a layer list, export a printable PDF, and to share a link with other people if you want to highlight certain areas or discuss the map. One of our other links is to our text version of the webpage. And with this text webpage, it provides an accessible, screen reader compatible version of the same information. And it works great for folks who also just prefer to read an overview of the open house content and just run through all of the projects in a linear fashion. Our web offerings are one of our primary tools for connecting with the community and disseminating information. We're continually working to make improvements, especially in regard to accessibility of late. The few things I've shown tonight are just the tip of the iceberg. With that, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, John, that was really helpful. I was wondering if you maybe considered recording a tutorial like you just gave us and providing a link to community members so that can kind of guide them, I mean, kind of exactly what you did for us. If if you could also provide that link on your splash page or your your landing page for the project.
Yeah, that's not something that I've thought about, but it is something that we could look into, definitely. We, and this about function up here, which isn't super friendly, but it does pop up and give a how-to on some of the tools if you hit it. But yeah, that is a good idea, and we can look into adding a video tutorial somewhere on our site that people could access and use.
Yeah, before they launch into into playing around with the map, I'm 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 not great with maps, and so I'm really intimidated by them, but I'll watch YouTube videos to help me change the battery in my car fob, whatever, and then I'm like, okay, that's how I do it, and then I feel like a little bit more confidence to go and do it.
Definitely.
Just an idea, just an idea.
No, that's a good idea, I do the same very frequently.
I think John's presentation was so polished and engaging, he could just take the twenty minutes
Oh, yeah.
Off the recording and just put it up online.
Yeah, there you go, just snip, yeah, just snip it.
No more work necessary.
Yeah, there you go, it's gonna be recorded anyway, good idea. Other questions? Comments for John?
I I know how much work went into this, and it's really cool, I've been waiting for something like this in Boulder, it's really exciting, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks, John, and just a shout out to all your team, the quiet heroes behind our work, so thank you, I'm glad you had the opportunity to showcase some of your work tonight.
Definitely, thank you for the opportunity.
All right, we are gonna move on to our second and final matters from the department, and that is to provide you another update on our twenty twenty-five budget. And sort of, we're gonna be focusing a little bit more on the operating portion of our budget. We started the introduction at the last meeting, and we also have a couple of members of city finance staff with us here tonight that I think Cole and and Sam will introduce and be part of the presentation, so a little something different for you here tonight. But I believe we're gonna follow a similar sequence for the past few meetings in which Cole Moffett, our senior accountant, is going to get us started on the presentation, and then Sam will be part of it as well, and then Charlotte and Raphael will join us as well, so turn it over to them.
All right, good evening, everyone, good to see you again. As Dan mentioned, we're gonna be talking more on the operating side today and doing a deep dive into some of the detailed information. Yeah, and we're gonna go and kind of go over really what comprises the operating budget and kind of summarize some changes that have happened, and also introduce our colleagues in the finance staff who can answer any of your questions on more citywide matters. And as always, some time for questions at the end. So kind of looking at the calendar, this is where we are, so we shared CIP information in May and started to dive into the operating last month in June, and tonight, we will take a deeper dive into some of the detailed information of the operating budget. And next month, we will wrap up the budget portion of this year with final recommendation from the board. All right, so as we outlined in the memo, the twenty twenty-five budget was due to EBT on June twenty-first, which we did submit. And if available, we will share the decisions of EBT in the August portion, once we receive back from them. And so just as you saw in the memo as well, there was one change in the CIP information, and that was on the Mount Sanitas Trail Improvement Project, we refined some of those costs, which increased slightly. So the operating budget, we gave base information last month, and so we'll be focusing more on the details and the reserves, and next month, we'll kind of bring all four of these pieces together in one holistic way. Okay, so when we look at operating, we kind of have four different categories, we talk about personnel expenditures, which non-personnel expenditures, cost allocation and transfers, and debt service. And as we shared, revenue growth is slowing and costs are increasing at the city, and we'll detail increased cost and service delivery changes if needed in each of these categories as we go through the presentation. And just as a reminder, the entire operating budget is within the Open Space Fund. The memo also detailed climate tax dollars that Open Space staff will use to implement the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. Those dollars don't come directly to S and P and they aren't included in the budget details we reviewed today, but Open Space staff does coordinate that work. And so kind of visual representation, starting with the personnel expenditures, you can see that by far and away, they are the most expansive part of the budget, and it's about sixty-five percent, and it's consistently this way as well. And this includes salaries, benefits across all employment types, all FTEs, seasonals and temporary, et cetera. And so the finance department calculates salaries and benefits for standard positions for us, and in Open Space, we kind of handle our own temporary and seasonal costs. So in twenty twenty-five, personnel costs increases to account for the city's compensation philosophy. And this is explained in more detail in the memo. Generally, these increases include implementation of living wage for temporary employees, a potential increase to the minimum wage for the region, which may be reviewed by city council later this year, and a review of market pay rates for positions in the department. Personnel cost change also include a reduction to temporary and seasonal position term lengths by two weeks excluding junior rangers. This change still allows for accomplishment of important projects in the work plan, but it does alter service delivered service delivery to account for those slow revenue growth and increasing costs like we mentioned. And later in this presentation, we'll also explain the reduction of one vacant position in this category. Another part of the operating budget is the non-personnel expenses, which accounts for about twenty-two and a half percent of our operating budget, and this again is generally consistent year over year of what we kind of see. And next slide. So the examples of non-personnel are kind of like routine maintenance for, you know, projects like trails, signs, fencing, funded research from other agencies and, you know, training or certification expenses, essentially the expenses that allow our staff to do their job and their programs, which conclude anything from interdepartmental charges, like savings mechanisms for computers, vehicles, energy, et cetera. And the increase from twenty-four percent of expenditures in twenty-four to thirty-one percent, twenty-five, is a result of several factors in the memo. But escalating costs for things like equipment, software is a major driver in these costs as well. And now Sam's gonna take us through the cost allocation and transfers portion.
Thank you, and I apologize, something happened to our slide just a moment ago, so I I'm just gonna quickly show this. So cost allocation and transfers make up nine and a half percent of the operating budget. That's up from eight percent from previous years. This category, in this nine and a half percent that I'm gonna just highlight here really quick, includes what is going to be considered a reallocation from what we had previously budgeted. We budgeted thirty-three point seven thousand dollars for tribal consultation work in the Open Space Fund that will be transferred to the General Fund. And that transfer is still going to be budgeted in the Open Space Fund, but now shows up in this category for cost allocation. And that transfer is still going to be budgeted in the open space fund, but now shows up in this category for cost allocation and transfers. So moving on here, the cost allocation plan is developed by the finance department and assigns indirect general fund costs of departments, such as the city attorney's office, HR and finance. Typically, the city updates the cost allocation plan every two to three years, and it was last updated in 2022 for the 2023 budget. The latest plan accounts for several categories of increased costs for things like supplies, materials, personnel and property and casualty insurance costs after the Marshall Fire. OSMP staff have been working with our colleagues in the finance department who are here tonight to draft an approach to fully afford the new plan over several years. The amounts you see in the fund financial in this month's packet represent that phased approach to implement the full cost allocation plan. We'll inform OSBT of any changes or feedback from the city's executive budget team on that proposal. They're currently reviewing it as part of OSMP's 2025 budget submission. The final piece of the operating budget is debt service, which accounts for 3.3% of the operating budget. Debt service in OSMP includes repayment of a 2014 general obligation bond and Boulder Municipal Property Authority payments supporting the Lippincott property acquisition in 2018. And Jefferson County pays for 50% of the Lippincott expense, and this is captured as revenue in the fund financial. As we mentioned during the June meeting, any increase or change to the base budget requires submission of what's called a budget request to the city's executive budget team for review. We also noted other service delivery changes in this presentation that are also being reviewed by EBT in addition to these budget requests. OSMP has three categories of budget requests in 2025. The first is creation of two fixed term grant-funded positions to support the Mount Sanitas project from 2025 through 2027. The department expects grant reimbursement for costs associated with these positions. The next is implementation of changes to certain positions to apply HR policy. And the final category is a reduction of one vacant position. The duties under this volunteer service learning and partnerships senior manager role have been combined with a senior manager for education and outreach. This combined position is now called the Community Outreach Senior Manager, and the role was filled earlier this year. OSMP's 2025 budget request total $131,195. And this side serves as a summary of changes we discussed tonight and at the June business meeting. The CIP includes two changes. The proposed 2025 amount is $330,000 less than originally planned by the department. And projects or work will be deferred. In 2026, the CIP estimate is reduced by 1 million from the amount that was shared during last year's budgeting process. In the operating budget, there is a proposal for a two-week reduction to term lengths for temporary and seasonal positions excluding junior ranger positions. There will be a reduction of a vacant volunteer service learning and partnership senior manager position. And the department is also not proposing new base cost increases to account for increasing cost to contracts. And lastly, OSMP is proposing a reserve amount of 18% from 2025 through 2030. Reserves were increased to 20% after the 2013 flood. In the master plan, we have a strategy for budgeting for resilience and having adequate reserve amount, which led us to reviewing reserve strategies in the general fund. We want to align with the general fund and other fund strategies as we understand more about our financial state and are proposing to match the general fund's 18% reserves. Okay, from here, I'm actually going to turn it over to Charlotte and Raphael from the finance department to introduce themselves and they'll be available to answer questions too.
Good evening, OSB team members. I'm Charlotte Husky, Budget Officer for the city. We are excited to be here this evening. I'm here with our team member Raphael Teamley with the Central Budget Office as well, Principal Budget Analyst. Just a brief overview of the Central Budget Office with the finance department to share a little bit about what we do and how we work in supporting departments across the organization. We are responsible for citywide development, monitoring and planning of the city's 374.2 million operating budget and the six-year capital improvement program. We work across the organization and monitoring the city's finances of 19 departments and 41 budgeted funds. We advise city council as well as council committees and city management and work with departments across the organization on the city's finances and support departments across the organization through citywide financial initiatives as well. I know the OSMP department shared with you and I think a few months ago, the efforts in budgeting for resilience and equity. And we are moving forward with that, which is a shift of our traditional increment-based budgeting approach to our outcomes-based approach in alignment with the sustainability, equity and resilience framework. We also work in performing monitoring and fiscal impact analysis with departments across the organization.
Thank you, Charlotte. And I'm just going to share a couple more things before we jump into questions. So just closing out, I'll share steps for our upcoming meeting in the city's budget process. As we mentioned, the city's executive budget team is reviewing all details of the department's 2025 budget submission, including our proposal to implement the full cost allocation plan over a few years. And then we'll be coming back to OSBT on August 14th with any updates to the budget, public hearing and OSBT recommendation on the 2025 CIP and operating budget. So now closing with questions, does the OSBT have any questions for OSMP or finance department staff on the department's 2025 budget update?
Any questions? Okay. Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. I know you answered a lot of them over email, but I didn't see it until just now because you said it at four o'clock. And I think I sent my questions at 11 o'clock last night, so totally fair. I'll read these more later. But bigger picture sort of questions around compensation. So I know one of my questions were, you know, does the base amount of salaries going into next year assume some sort of calculated increase? Not necessarily cost of living by employee, but does the pool itself include some percentage of increase? And yeah, and where I'm headed with this is, you know, there's, because you talked a lot about the regional minimum wage and the living wage. And where I'm ultimately heading with this is compression. By absolutely bringing the lowest earning employees up to a living wage is the right thing to do. But I just, I wonder what the impacts are throughout the rest of the organization? Because you now have a low-level employee making $22.74. And then what happens to, you know, a third-year forestry person who is maybe making $25 an hour? Do they still make that 25? You know, so how are you planning for the ripple effects down the line? And yeah, are you going to be able to afford it?
I'm, I'm happy to talk from a citywide perspective. And then y'all can share for the department and more details from, on the citywide. We actually do not use a cost of living increase. We have got a compensation philosophy for pay for performance, so it's merit-based. We currently budget on a 3% increase. That's for non-union as well as the BMEA union. And this year, this upcoming year in 2025 for the police and fire as well per their contracts. We did include funding for living wage. That was direct living wage impacts that did not address wage compression. I know that we've been working on addressing that in the 2024 budget and in the 2025 budget as well. In terms of minimum wage, we've worked across city departments across the organization, as Sam was mentioning earlier, to prepare for the council conversation that's coming forward in the fall of regional, of the regional minimum wage potential implementation. And that has been included in, in the budgets for consideration, so.
Thank you. Yeah. And I'll, I'll just add to what Charlotte shared. So Cole mentioned that we an OSMP budget for our own seasonal and temporary position. So a forestry crew member, for instance, is a temporary position. So with minimum wage, for example, one of the questions you had asked over email had asked how much that would cost when we shared an estimate about 27,000. That did include a compression adjustment. Working with the finance department, we, we did determine that it was worth budgeting for that compression adjustment for junior ranger crew leads. Junior ranger crew members would be subject to that minimum wage adjustment, and then that would put it in a similar level to what the crew leads would be making. So we did adjust for that compression for those, those crew leads. In terms of living wage, we, we didn't factor in that compression adjustment to align with what we are doing for standard positions as well. And we are seeing a little bit of a natural adjustment when we budget to our new salary ranges. Our new salary ranges do bring everyone in a temporary or seasonal position up to living wage, and that has adjusted our pay ranges. We budget by the middle of the pay range. And so that did account for that adjustment. But we didn't necessarily do it to the same level that we did for minimum wage, where we saw that specific dollar amount and then move it. But I think the way that we budget at the middle of a pay range has made it so that we can account for adjusting that compression for positions that were brought up to living wage and the positions around them.
Okay. That's really helpful. And I think assuming that the junior rangers do get that minimum, that regional minimum wage is the right way to go for $27,000. Do you see that you would, you would maybe, I don't know, I think I read some possibility that you might actually move toward more seasonal and seasonal positions? So that, not that you would do it intentionally, not to, you know, to avoid paying people living wage, but that's do you see yourselves moving more to that model in staffing in the future? Do you want to, as we see this living wage?
Yeah, as far as employee classifications, standard, temporary, seasonal. A lot of that guidance comes from the HR Human Resources City Department. And I know that there is an effort in order to provide more consistency across the organization of how we define what our classifications are, what would be, well, standard is, is pretty easy to define. But it gets a little, a little murkier as you, as you look at the temporary versus seasonal versus varied employee classes. And there are a few departments, us being a major one, who have a lot of those employee classes within them. And so I know the HR department has been working in order to provide more, you know, conformity and uniformity around what those definitions are. So there is still some, as far as some suggested definitions that are starting to come out of what would make a temporary versus a seasonal. That type of work is ongoing right now to, to better define exactly what that looks like. Both seasonal and temps are going to be employees that work 12 months or less. But then it's how do you define between a seasonal and a temp? And, and those are things that the HR department is providing guidance on. So I don't think, for your answer, I don't think it would be the open space and mountain parks departments specifics stance to to switch between employee, it'd be more of the guidance that we're getting citywide for how these definitions end up playing out of, of where our employee classifications land and where our specific positions end up landing between a varied employee, temporary employee or seasonal employee. So it is an effort that is underway citywide to, to look at the employment classes and what the exact definitions are. In other words, it wouldn't be a department-specific sort of decision on that.
Yeah, only that you're a department that uses more of those classifications of employees.
As you know, your experience, Parks and Recreation would be the other big one. And there's, there's others within other departments, but Parks and Rec and Open Space are definitely the two departments that rely heavily on, on that workforce.
I know in my own work, we're, we're considering whether we bring in more seasonal people so we don't have to pay them benefits and a certain wage. So I just didn't know if that's, and this is for our trail crews, I didn't know if that's where you might be headed with that. But it sounds like it's not intentional on your part to head that direction.
Yeah, no, it's, that's, that's an enterprise system of, of decision-making that, and that's not at the department level.
And I asked you some other questions around cost allocation. I don't want to bring them up tonight. Would you just mind copying them and sending them to the rest of the board?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I thought your answers were, were good, but it would also be useful for everybody else. Any other questions on the budget? We get one more chance at this next, next, no, next month. And then we'll actually vote on it in August. So we got one additional month and, which is great because Brady is not here tonight. So I know that he would like to be, participate in that. We have, I think we're done with the budget for tonight. And suddenly got warmer. Did you feel that? I don't know.
Well, I think it's because you're getting close to the end.
Okay. Come on.
Thank you, Charlotte. Thank you, Raphael. Thanks, Cole and Sam for, on that item. Just a couple of quick, quick announcements. 7/22, a big date's coming up. I sent you all invite to join us for informal casual celebration of the opening of the North Sky Trail. So that's what that was for. And, and for those who would like to join us after the, the formal 45-minute presentation, we'll, we can do a walk along the trail if, if people are so inclined. So I just wanted to remind you of that. And I also just want to say that we've been updating you very closely and intensely on our wildfire mitigation efforts and especially our perimeter mowing program. Just want to let you know that we have completed almost all of our June, July mowing at the various sites around that we've been telling you about, and it was very successful without a hitch. The ready-to-work crews were marvelous. And if you are curious about what it looks like, Wonderland Lake is probably the easiest accessible field or walking down Blue Bell Road at, coming out of the Ranger Cottage is probably the two highest profile sites of what that perimeter mowing program looks like. So just wanted to acknowledge that.
Dan, Wonderland Lake is the same fence line we walked on our retreat?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And you'll see on both the north and south, north and the south sides of that horseshoe in there have had the 30-foot perimeter addressed.
Any other announcements, Dan?
That's it.
I think that I will adjourn the meeting 8:59. A minute early somehow, somehow. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.